We do have a quorum we'll call to order. The special session of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners this Tuesday, November 26, 2005. We'll open court this evening. Ms. Lane, if you would, please take the roll. If you would, press your attendance button or A button. Present button.
I have 23 present, one absent.
23, excuse me, go ahead.
23 present, one absent, Commissioner Meach.
23 present, one absent, Commissioner Lynch. Tonight, as we open our session, I'd ask you to please stand for the invocation. Commissioner Hewlett will lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Barnwell will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Let's pray. To Heavenly Father, we ask that you pour out your wisdom and guide the actions of this commission and the government of Williamson County. We thank you for the gifts that you've given us and we pray especially for those men and women in uniform serving to defend our freedom around the world. All this we ask in Jesus' name and all things I will be done. Amen.
Amen.
Please join in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before us tonight is Resolution Number SS 11-05-01. Resolution to approve a pilot payment in lieu of taxes program for Nissan North America. At this time, I'll recognize County Mayor Rogers Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and County Commission members. Many of you were here the last week when we had the presentation. Some of you weren't, were not. We will be basically going through that same format again tonight and so that you'll have an opportunity to ask questions, those individuals that were not here the other night. Tonight is one of those nights I think you'll have an opportunity to vote, to help our citizens and to help the local economy and help Middle Tennessee and the state of Tennessee. This has been a process that's been going on for the almost a year now. The process that was, we were very fortunate to be contacted by the State Department of Economic Development and Commissioner Matt Kispert, who is here tonight, and we're going to ask him to speak some of the remarks that he would like to make. Up until the announcement that was made in Nashville, we did not know the firm. We dealt with the state, we dealt with the folks that they were dealing with. David and Diane, myself, were the only ones that were working on these numbers here inside the county, along with our sister city Franklin and Mayor Miller and Jay Johnson. And Jay's, Russ Truel, was working on it on the city side. So there was less than 10 people that was involved there. And so if the question should come up, how far and back did you know about it? We knew about the event somewhere around January or February of this year, but as far as the actual firm, we were not privy to that information. We were, we gave them our word, we would work and we'd work diligently, diligently at it and work behind the scenes to try to crunch the numbers and make those numbers work. Also, as you will see in the resolution, we've made every effort to protect and preserve that tax percentage. Very similar to what you all voted on in the, at the July County Commission meeting. The other issue is we, I'm just going to state a few things, Mr. Chairman, and then I'm going to let some of the other folks talk about it. There will be an amendment offered tonight. Jeff will explain that amendment to you. It's to get some clarification of language on the actual resolution. I was trying to come up with some things in which to say that were different than the other night, and the only thing that I can say that it is probably more paramount, based on some actions that occurred in our sister county, that occurred that we're making an all-out effort to create those jobs here in Williamson County. And it's not just Williamson County, it's also Middle Tennessee and the state of Tennessee. Many of you may not know, but in another county not too far from here, in Stewart County, they lost another manufacturing over there, it was 95 jobs. And it seems all the way around us, there's a lot of counties that aren't as fortunate as we are, and I don't take that for granted. And I hope we never take it for granted. We do have low unemployment, but we work very diligently, youth work very hard, cities have worked very hard, Franklin, Brentwood, Spring Hill, Fairview, Thompson Station, all of us work hard to keep these jobs. And we may not always agree philosophically in the way to get things done, but it's an excellent place to live and it's an excellent place to work. And we need to always remember that, as far as I'm concerned, that it is about the future of our children and jobs. And I know there's some tax incentives. This is not a, this is not a total, they're coming to town, a lot of people have called and asked where they've come, if they, if they, we hadn't offered the taxes. And I guess we'll ever know, but I know one thing. In order to compete in the world market, the global market we're in in the United States today, we've got to be able to deal and we've got to lay our cards out on the table. And we've protected our schools. And this company, Nissan, has said public education is very, very important. They respect that and they anticipate honoring that. We anticipate them honoring that. And I am glad to be standing before you and you've got a lot of data. I know you've had it for a period of time. I hope your questions have been answered and we'll get on with it, Mr. Chairman. If I could, I'd like to call upon Commissioner Matt Kispert first of all, and then later on, I'm going to ask Jay Johnson from the city, city manager, to come up and explain the network of roads that would, kind of the infrastructure that goes around, around that. And we'll have, if you don't mind, I'll have David Coleman to kind of put some pieces, the numbers together here at the local level, and answer your question. And then finally with Jeff Mosley, if you all don't mind letting him speak from the microphone to explain the legal side and the amendment that's being offered tonight. And then we will throw the questions at us, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Kispert, Mr. Kispert first.
Welcome, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, it's an honor for me to be before you this evening and it is a pleasure for me to be here to hopefully provide a little information and answer any questions you might have relative to the announcement by Nissan North America that they were going to relocate their headquarters to Williamson County. I think that it is a very exciting opportunity for our state and for this community as we have been working toward this goal since the beginning of this administration. The governor saw from his very first days in office that there could be no more significant achievement than to bring Nissan's headquarters to complement their existing investments in Smyrna and Deckard. And the fact that they saw the benefits of the quality of life and the business climate here in Tennessee being where they wanted to invest for their future was a significant victory for all of us. I want to thank both Mayor Anderson and Mayor Miller because it is highly unusual for the Commissioner of Economic and Community Development to ask mayors of communities to come and meet and to say, "We have an opportunity that is extraordinary. All I can tell you is this very limited piece of the pie, but should we be successful, we will be, it will be beneficial to both your community and to our state as a whole." Both mayors understood the position we were in, recognizing that we had to protect the confidentiality of the client with whom we were working, and they worked diligently to provide the very best information and to assist us in making this a true partnership from both the state and local governments. I also want to say that from the very beginning, when we were discussing with Nissan, the arrangement around which a pilot could be structured, they were the ones who said, "We want to convey to the local community that we want to fund local education." And the part of the property tax that goes to funding local education, we want to pay and we don't want it part of the discussions. And I think that was extremely responsible on their part. It shows the commitment they have to the community, to the recognition that to get the kind of skilled workforce they need for all their facilities, they recognize that you have to make that kind of investment in education. This is truly a unique opportunity for our state. I was telling some reporters today, we have had a number of calls from companies wanting to know, what is it Nissan saw, what is it that directed them to this decision? Because they have searches going on for various opportunities and to be quite honest, Tennessee was not on some of their lists. But because of what they had heard and read, they wanted to know. And we talked to them about the quality of life, we've talked to them about the business climate, about the governor who understands business. We also talked to them about the, the way in which we're partnering with local communities, with TBA, with all of those who are part of the economic development team. This is truly a partnership. So I cannot be more proud of the way in which this came together. I think that, and I know the governor believes, it's been a very prudent approach in both the way the state and local governments have approached this. We asked back in March, the University of Tennessee, join us in analyzing our efforts as we were moving forward. Dr. Bill Fox at the Center for Business and Economic Research. He, as we've done in every large project that we've worked, we've had them involved so that we can understand the benefits of the project we're working and also make sure that what is offered and ultimately agreed to is a prudent use of the state's resources. Dr. Fox showed in his report that for every $1 of incentives from the state and local government, one time, this project alone will generate $2.50 in annual growth in per capita income. It's about $25 million in just the sales tax alone that will be generated from this investment and about 13,000 indirect jobs. I think that's the kind of opportunity and the kind of investment that we all earn for every day. It's what makes me go to work every day and give it my, my best in this job. And to be able to come to you and come to our friends throughout Middle Tennessee and say, "This is what our very reasonable use of incentives will, will generate for our mid-state and state economy," I think is a, is a business approach to a wonderful opportunity. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, provide any information that you might want. On behalf of the governor, who knows I'm here, we've talked about my, my being here. He wanted to convey to you his appreciation for the way in which the county has worked with us and we stand ready to continue to work with you on this and other opportunities in the future. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Commissioner Kispert? Press your, okay. Commissioner Moon?
Commissioner, this project, which I wholly support, I think it's wonderful, happens to lie in the district that's represented by Commissioner Wilson and myself. In our district, as in much of Williamson County, the northwest corridor is far outweigh the east-west corridors. Carruthers Parkway is going to dump right into Highway 96 East. I don't know if you're the right person to ask this, but you know a whole lot more folks up there than I do. The expansion of Highway 96 East, which is the major corridor from Franklin to Murfreesboro, has stalled. It is dead. They're not doing property acquisitions, they're not doing engineering. I think it'd be a benefit to this project, and I know it'd be a benefit to, to the people in our district, if you could just talk to T.D., Commissioner Nicely, and see if we could start the expansion of Highway 96 East.
I'll be happy to convey that to Commissioner Nicely. We've, he's been a part of our efforts relative to the infrastructure and he's very attuned to these issues, so I'm happy to convey to him the concern expressed about Highway 96. I'm familiar with what you're, what you're stating and I will share that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Other questions of Commissioner Kispert? Thank you, sir. I see none.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the commission. I very much appreciate the invitation to address you this evening. I want to begin by reiterating what the others have said. This has been a very positive partnership between the state, the county and the city. All of us had issues of interest to be addressed during those negotiations, during those discussions, and there was a very positive effort to make sure that it worked for each, each of the levels of government. I'd like to briefly address two things, if I may. First, there was a pilot agreement proposed with the county. There is a separate pilot agreement proposed with the city of Franklin. In that instance, the city will be creating an economic development district of approximately 850 acres adjacent to the proposed Nissan location. The incremental property tax growth, property tax growth from that property, not county, only city, would be used to retire the bonds that would be issued to acquire the property. The city would, the City Industrial Development Board would own the property on which the Nissan corporate headquarters would sit during the life of the bonds. There would be no county tax money involved in that. The value of that incentive is approximately $15 million in current, current value. The other issue that's come up relates to road improvements, as Commissioner Moon asked. I provided a map on your podium this evening. As part of the incentive from the state to the local governments, to the company, there are a number of road projects to be, to be completed in conjunction with the facility. First is the improvements to I-65 and McEwen Drive interchange. That project has already been bid and the pre-construction conference is next week. On the map, you see a road that is Carruthers Parkway from its current terminus, a corporate center drive down to the new McEwen Drive. That road and then McEwen Drive from Carruthers Parkway to the east property line of the Crescent property would be completed in conjunction with this project by the state and the developer. The city has already authorized the engineering of Carruthers Parkway between McEwen Drive and Liberty Pike. That project is currently scheduled for our, our construction next year. From Liberty Pike down to 96 East, where Commissioner Moon referenced, that project has already been funded and awarded for construction and should start, should start shortly. So there, there will be a number of improvements. As I said during the committee meetings last week, we update our capital improvements plan each January and February. I expect that we will reevaluate some of the road projects because, because of this project, not necessarily deleting anything, but reevaluating the priorities. And again, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Johnson? I see none. Excuse me. Commissioner Hester?
Thank you, sir. Hello. I, I wanted to ask where McEwen Drive ends on this map, please, sir, that we have in front of us, Mr. Johnson, if you could.
It ends at the western boundary of, of Liberty Park, if you're familiar with that. And then the board has authorized the design of roadway improvements from that point to Wilson Pike.
Yes.
But I, I need to emphasize, as you all well aware, these things are done in phases and all that's been authorized at this point is design. But we do have plans to go all the way to Wilson Pike.
Thank you.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes, Mr. Johnson, I'd like to reiterate what Commissioner Smith talked about the other night, and that's in regard to Royal Oaks Boulevard. I know that that's not a part of this particular project, but I have had some concerns expressed to me not to let this project overshadow the other needs that we have, particularly as it relates to Royal Oaks Boulevard and 96. I know that project's been on the board about four years now and I would hope that we could move that project forward as we're doing these other projects as well.
I agree and understand. I think some of our collector roads are more arterial roads. It's critical that, that improvements coincide to the extent possible with, with this scale of development.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If, Commissioners, if you would look in your packet, I believe you all have a copy of the schedule of the tax abatement. It's headed up, financial costs versus revenues to Williamson County. And if we can all get that, and I'll try to go through that in just a moment. It's difficult to talk about this kind of money and say it's simple, but in a way, our part is simple. This document is hopefully our final draft. It is our final draft at this point, but it's, it wasn't our first draft. We've been through a long journey on this and it's changed a lot. I will point out one thing to you that we discovered on Thursday night. The column that says total tax to be paid with a total of $50 million, that should have been taken out. That was back when Franklin was a part of the tax abatement process. As I said, this was changing almost daily and weekly right up to the end. And one thing that did simplify it was when the city and the county were working together on the abatement and together on the land, it was very difficult to get all that to mesh. And so right at the end of the process, Franklin came up with the idea that they will handle the land portion and we would do the tax abatement on the county taxes. And I think that on our part really simplified the deal at that point. So what you're seeing is a 30-year schedule of a tax abatement based on 47% of real and personal property tax. Again, we'll just go to the bottom line. We will be abating $32.5 million over 30 years. We will be collecting $36.6 million over 30 years. To the far right-hand side, the company net present value, the second to last column, $18.9 million. During the process and trying to get to the figures that the company needed to make the deal work for them, that was the total that was very critical to them that we had to end up at that point. And so if you look at the tax abatement, say what was magical about that, really wasn't anything magical about the tax abatement. That was the figure that they felt was very important to them, where we needed to be to make this agreement work for them and for us. As I said, and Mayor Anderson mentioned earlier, we're abating 47%, but we're collecting 53% and that will go totally to our school system.
Questions of Mr. Coleman? I see none. Thank you, David. Counselor, would you like to talk to us about the amendment?
First, I want to talk a little bit about why we're dealing with the format that we are. Most of the pilot programs, the ones you're used to seeing, community health systems in July and the like, have come through the Williamson County Industrial Development Board. This is coming through the Franklin Industrial Development Board. The reason for that is, is that the pilot from the county is only one part of the incentive package that was put together for Nissan. In doing so, because of the acquisition of the land and some of the other things that are happening with other entities, it made more sense for it to go through the Franklin Industrial Development Board. So we didn't have to run parallel processes with them doing one program over there and us doing pilot over here. We do have the authority and the statutory authority to delegate to the Franklin Industrial Development Board the ability to enter into this pilot on our behalf, and that's what this resolution would do. There's, as many folks have mentioned, this thing was a moving target and it happened very quickly. From the time of the announcement to this meeting, we're looking at approximately 12 days. And in doing so, we had to come up with a resolution very quickly. So there is a minor amendment that we're going to have offered tonight, and there is one typographical error that I would point out to you that will be fixed under your rules as a typographical error. And the third whereas, where it reads Nissan currently employs approximately 1,300 employees and is headquartered, that should read "at its headquarters in Gardena, California." They obviously employ a heck of a lot more than 1,300 folks throughout their company. So that's the typo that will get fixed. The amendment is actually to number two under the resolution itself. And basically goes from the start of page three where it reads, "Below of the additional ad valorem taxes with respect to construction of facilities will be deleted. Inserted in place, before the word below is 'in the agreement attached and summarized below,' period." The reason for the amendment is fairly simple. We want the pilot agreement itself, which is attached to the resolution, to control any decisions or conception of how the pilot will work. We have a very thorough document that explains how it will be calculated and what the percentages are. We want to make sure that the attachment in fact controls any calculations of those. That was brought to me from other counsel for Nissan just in the last few days, and that's why we didn't get it in the original resolution. It does not change the content of the tax agreement, it just makes it the controlling document. I'd be glad to answer any questions on that.
Any questions of Mr. Mosley? I see none. Procedurally, what we'll do now at this time, and I'd like to offer you this resolution, SS 11-05-1, a resolution to approve a pilot payment in lieu of taxes program for Nissan North American Incorporated. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Barnwell, second by Commissioner Smith to get this on the floor. And I'll also, at this time, entertain the amendment from Commissioner Green.
I propose the amendment to Resolution SS 11-05-1. And it's at the bottom of page two to the top of page three, delete the existing section two in its entirety and replace it with the following. "The IDB is hereby authorized to negotiate and enter into an agreement to accept payments in lieu of ad valorem taxes that would result from the construction of Nissan facilities in Williamson County, Tennessee, with said payments to be equal to the percentage specified in the attached agreement and summarized below. The first tax year shall be the calendar year in which the construction project is completed and placed into service."
Commissioner Hancock II on the amendment that's up for consideration. Is the amendment loaded, please? Okay. What I'd like to do is I want to vote the amendment, and then I've got some other people that I'd like to recognize to address us before we vote on the resolution. Let's vote on this amendment. If you're in favor of the amendment to SS 11-05-1, press yes button. Opposed, you know button. Court of vote, please, Ms. Anderson?
I agree, yes.
Thank you. Resolution, the amendment is unanimously adopted. At this time, I'd like to recognize our state representative, Charles Sargent. If you'd like to, Charles, to come forward and make any comments. And then out of courtesy, I'd like to recognize the CFO of Nissan and some of their compatriots and workers are here tonight, so Representative, if you'd speak to us. And then Mr. Petty, if you'd be ready, I'll let you address our body. Please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. I had the, I was fortunate last week at the three committees to make a talk a little bit about the tax structure and everything and that nature. I think you understand that real well now, after you've looked at your package and everyone's explained it. But I want to go back a little bit for, just to bring you back a ways. About 20 years ago, this commission decided they wanted to be a Class I county. And they went on that road by improving education. And education became a major issue to this commission. A number of you people sat on it. I know Commissioner McCord, Commissioner Hancock, Commissioner Hayes, Commissioner Shalafar sat on this and they started funding education. In the 70s, they, in the early 80s, education was not a major priority of Williamson County. After the 85 or so, they made education a very top priority. And by doing that, I think you can see where we've come in the last 20 years in Williamson County. I look at Williamson County and I'm fortunate to represent them in the state. I look at Williamson County as a crown. And we start looking at it like that and we have first class. We've got the best school system in the state of Tennessee. By doing that, we were able to attract a number of businesses into our community. You know, we thought Cool Springs Mall was going to be the lifesaver and now, when you look at all the outposts of Cool Springs Mall, you say, you know, "I can't believe this is happening." Then when we, able to recruit primers. Primers came, we thought that was going to be, you know, the best jewel we've ever had. And community, uh, community health is moving here. Their headquarters over to the Cool Springs area. This has all happened because of education. And by that, with Nissan looking at us, having the best educational school system probably in the state, I believe we do, some people argue, but I believe we have the number one educational system in the, in the state of Tennessee. And with the work the Governor Breton, Commissioner Kispert has done, I worked with Commissioner Kispert when he was a state representative- with Commissioner Kispert when he was a state representative, he was head of finance, he understands the numbers. We are very fortunate to have Mayor Miller and Mayor Anderson on board, and they understand what this does. And this is like getting the crown jewel for our crown. And by that, we'll have other jewels that are going to be coming into place. And this is a very important step for Williamson County, and you all should be proud to be able to sit here tonight and make this vote, because I think in years to come, you're going to see how, what well worth this was, you know, making this vote tonight. And I appreciate you letting me address the commission, and commissioners, thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative Sargent. Mr. Ron Petty. Ron is the CFO of Nissan. Welcome, Ron.
Thank you. Appreciate being here this evening, Mr. Chairman and commission members. It's an honor to stand before you and on behalf of Nissan North America and our 1,300 employees in our headquarters operation. We look forward to coming to Tennessee, being part of the community, being part of Williamson County and the city of Franklin. So with your vote, we look forward to join that partnership together.
Any questions of Mr. Petty? I know he's not ready for us to vote, I'm sure. Thank you, Ron, and I know that you've got some of your folks here, Tracy Woodard and Dicky Smith, I hear, not anybody else that I didn't recognize. That's it?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Some other folks that I'd just like to officially recognize, I know that's worked on this, Mark Drury. Mark's here with us tonight, working with Commissioner Kispert, and certainly thank you for being here. There's some other folks that worked hard on this project, Gilmore Harris, Bob Anacon is here, and also someone that's worked very hard on this behind the scenes, Nancy Conway. Nancy, thank you for all of your efforts in making this come together for us. Any other questions? Commissioner Hancock, I recognize you, sir.
Call for the question.
Is there a second? All in favor, call the question, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Resolution, SS 105-1 is on the board, is amended. If you're in favor of this resolution, press the yes button. This is as amended. And let me say, I almost, I do need to make this statement before we vote. I want to disclose professionally that I do business with several of the suppliers to Nissan, and I want to make that a part of this public record. I'm not compensated directly by Nissan, but I do support several of their suppliers, and I wanted to make that as a public record before I do take this vote. Anybody else wishing to make any disclosures?
I drive a Nissan pickup. And half a year.
I won't disclose how many I drive. Any other? Okay. If you're in favor, we've already voted 23 yes, unanimous approval of this resolution, and we thank all of you for being here for that. Before we leave tonight, yes, excuse me, Commissioner Williams?
I request. We, and we voted on Nissan, I support it. But I've had several contacts about concerns, about congestion, more traffic, this type thing come across, both by mail and by telephone. And so I would urge Mr. Johnson, on behalf of the city, to make sure that road construction gets there before the congestion starts. That would be my request. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Some announcements. All of you have a copy of the new rules, regulations and procedures that's laying at your place tonight. Please take note of that. Take note of the public notice of cancellation. The Purchasing and Insurance Committee meeting scheduled for Monday, November the 28th, has been canceled due to a lack of business. And also tonight, before we leave, I'd like to recognize the fact that Commissioner Newt McCord is with us. Newt, great to see you here. It's always a pleasure to see Newt and good to see that he's out and about. And Keith, thank you for being here tonight, Keith's son, excuse me, Newt's son Keith is with us. Are there any other comments or announcements? Commissioner Barnwell?
I'd just like to give notice that the Industrial Development Board, which is part of this process, will be meeting next Tuesday at 9:00 AM at City Hall. I am a member of that committee, so just want to let you all know in case you want to come visit us while we're going through it.
I guess the other announcement, Education Committee will meet Monday night, so that's still on the agenda. Anything further? entertain a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is unanimously adopted. We're in adjournment.